Let's call the planning commission meeting to order at 6:04 PM. Welcome, everyone. We have a quorum. We have four planning commission members here. Let's start off with announcements. Oh, but I will say that Brandy Saxton of PlaySense did notify us that she has a scheduling conflict, so she will be, it looks like, late. So, but she, you know, we expect her to be part of this meeting. We just may have to shift things around. So we'll get through announcements in minutes and then maybe go to, well, either, either the other two, you know, the sections of the land use regs that add cost or the rural business zoning district. Okay. Let's go with announcements. I know I have a bunch, but I'll let anyone else. Yeah, Sarah.
I'm just curious, excuse me, if anyone here is attending the downtown and historic preservation conference on Thursday? If you're not, maybe consider it.
I am not because I am off on a shepherding on school field trip on that day.
I would say that sounds more fun, but maybe not.
It's a whale watch. This is our calm maybe.
Could you, could you repeat what that is?
Yeah, the downtown and historic preservation conference. It is, I think Preservation Trust of Vermont and maybe like the Department of Housing and Community Development, I think, host it together. And it's usually a yearly thing. They didn't do it for, I think, COVID, all the COVID years. So this is their first in a few years. It's in St. Johnsbury. It's pretty, I think they're doing it similarly to how they've done in the past where it's like, they hold it in a downtown and you like, you know, basically walk in between buildings for different sessions. So it's kind of a cool setup. I'm also presenting, so. Partial to it, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a cool venue if people have time.
Sarah, what are you presenting on?
I'm going up there with the community members slash town staff from Rockingham to talk about the incremental development work that we did. It's partially like the InkDev bringing incremental development alliance to Rockingham, but then it sort of expands on that and talks about a lot of like the incremental changes that the town and village has been making to sort of have a, a big impact. So, yeah, should be interesting. Lots of like, you know, housing conversations and that's, that sort of stuff.
I can send around the, if anybody's interested, I can send around. It's going to depend on costs as to whether I could pay for somebody to go. But I can send around if you're interested in looking at it.
Sounds good. Sue, do you have anything to announce?
Why don't you go with yours first? And then, because some of mine might dovetail with yours. Brandy just came on.
What, what did Lena's message just say?
Oh, Lena is, she's eating supper and listening.
Okay, great. Welcome, Lena. So that maybe goes right into my first announcement. We have another vacancy. Kate Berry resigned. So that's two, and hopefully we'll get those positions filled at the late June select board meeting. There's announcements for that. So if y'all have any friends, acquaintances, the public listening.
Are there people interested? Do we know or?
Has anyone contacted you, Sue?
No, I've not, I've not spoken with anybody.
They have to be a resident?
They do have to be a resident.
Okay, next month, July, is our annual organizational meeting where we elect officers and review our bylaws and make any changes to bylaws. And maybe we'll just quickly go over, or at least have us in supporting docs, you know, the state statutes and some other kind of foundational or real relevant documents to our powers and duties. So be thinking about those things. Sue, did you, were you able to choose a date for the joint meeting that we're planning?
Yes. So the best with the most attendees is actually June 20th. It's not a date that Prudence, you are, were able to make, and there's one DRB member that cannot make that date, but that seems to be the best, Monday, June 20th.
Okay.
So that, that's what I'd recommend if, yeah.
Sounds good, unfortunately, for Prudence.
Do we, I know, I don't know if this is a federal or a state holiday, or maybe neither, but Juneteenth. Just a thought.
It's not a municipal. It's, it's not a town one yet. I don't, I'll look into that before we warn this.
Yeah, but for people who, who will be absent, we will have a, you know, we'll put out an agenda and maybe have a Google Drive folder and put the anybody's pre-prepared, any of the committees, you know, or boards or commissions. I don't know the one term to lump those three sorts of things into one government entities, their, their ideas in advance. So one could respond to that.
And it'll be recorded too.
It'll be recorded too. Yeah, I mean, I think it's mainly going to be the DRB and the DRC giving us feedback, but I personally have a couple, you know, proposals or questions for them. Okay, so June 20th at 6:00 PM, and we will warn that. And the only other thing I have is that I hope you all saw where we're in attendance for. Oh, yeah. Well, it was during last planning commission meeting, staff's presentation on the plan for, for regulating or for treating cannabis businesses. So what I'm thinking is that we all should just consider that kind of finally, I mean, one last time and review the presentation and see if we have any final refining ideas that we want to, you know, pitch to the commission and, and, and layer upon just not, you know, not doing anything to the regs. And then bring that up to Sue or I, and at next meeting, we can, we can have a discussion and make a decision on that. For example, you know, Sue and I have chatted and Steve too, just about at minimum, just adding something in the use definitions, you know, where it defines everything. What is a, what is a single family residence? What is a, you know, manufacturing? What is a bar? What is a bowling alley? You know, adding something for cannabis there? Because I don't think it's, I think we all think it's not very intuitive or common sense, you know, that whole chart that shows all the different uses for cultivator, manufacturer and everything that, that may be good to have in there. Okay, I think that's it. Any other announcements?
I, I have one just about Thursday. The South Main Groundworks offices are having a grand opening on Thursday, 11 to 2:00 PM, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So consider yourselves invited. It's at 60 and 54 South Main.
And I will quickly say, just jumping back, that the staff's cannabis presentation is on their department webpage as a link. Okay, let's move on. And I see Brandy's joined us, so, yeah.
I just, I just have one announcement. I just wanted to let you know that the Walk-Bike Master Plan is having like a soft kickoff this Wednesday. The consultants and myself are taking the library evacs out, going to be riding around town. And then there is a kind of a smaller kickoff meeting at 3:00, which Prudence, Dan and Gary have been invited to that. So there'll be a larger kickoff at a different time. This is kind of just talk about data and, and just some, some preliminary stuff. So that's, that's getting going.
Okay, good to hear. Let's just do the minutes maybe quickly before we jump into Brandy presenting for that agenda item. Yeah, so let's, this is about the May 2 meeting minutes. Anything to add or edit or change? Or a motion to be made?
I have a couple, sorry, I've got a couple of questions. Let's see, I think it's the first paragraph of the second page. It says, Ricky Davidson asks, ask whether anyone that sells things could see cannabis as long as they aren't in the five.
Probably sell.
It probably means sell. Yeah, anyone, okay, could sell cannabis, okay. And I think there was, I saw one other little thing, but I'm not finding it. So don't wait for me.
Was it buffer in the second paragraph of the first page?
Oh.
It's just a typo. I mean, it's not.
Okay, no, this had to do. Oh, okay, just two paragraphs from that one. It started, okay, this one starts Sam Neal, Managing Director of a marijuana-based business stated all cultivation, I think it should be licenses.
Yep.
Up to tier five. That's it for me. I, I moved their approval.
Okay, I will second it. Discussion about it? No. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. That's all four of us. Okay, passes. Hey, for the two commissioners who weren't around when we did the downtown design plan, I think, we're welcoming back Brandy Saxton of PlaySense. She also did the downtown design plan and she is our higher consultant for the zoning for neighborhood housing project. And this is the kickoff meeting. So I'll kick it over to you, Brandy.
Great, thank you very much. It's nice to see you all virtually this evening, but in the real world soon. So I've got a couple of things to go over with you this evening during the kickoff meeting. We'll look through the scope of work. An opportunity to just run through the general outline of what's going to be happening for the project. I'm interested in your goals for the project. Any questions that you've got, feel free to jump in and, and do that. I know you looked at it previously and had some thoughts about restructuring the public outreach component. And I've got a proposal for doing that. And so we will go through that. And then I have started the, given you the document review, which gives you an indication of the materials that will be used for the technical review of the regulations, which is the first step in this process. And so we'll look at that. And then the third item to be considered tonight is so that we can get going on preparing materials and advertising. It's to think about the routes for the walking tours. So we'll deal with that. The third item. So, um, should I share my screen, Sue, of, and that would be for the, not the mapping computer, but just the regular one. I've got, I've now joined with two computers.
Well, you're only one-headed, so it looks normal to us.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do set it up so that the other one, the one that does maps doesn't actually do me too. So that would be really bad to see myself in stereo and hear myself in stereo. That would go very poorly. Okay, let me see here. That looks good.
Yep.
Okay, so this is the scope of work from the proposal. And we are currently on schedule, having a kickoff meeting on June 6th. So that's really good. The first step, like I said, which you see coming in here in June is the technical review. And that's really to look at your regulations in response to the town's policy documents, the guiding policy documents. So primarily the town plan, but other plans and studies that, that you've had as well, that set direction and policy for how the town should be regulating land use. And we're also going to look at the NDA program requirements, particularly with the thought that you might be interested in extending a neighborhood development area to West Brattleboro. So make sure that the regulations that are in place will work for that if you decide to go in that direction. The, you've been working with the Enabling Better Places Guide, so we'll look at the recommendations in there in comparison to the current standards. And then, you know, there's been a few tweaks by the legislators in the past few years. I will make sure that we catch and update anything in the regulations that is now out of sync with statutes. So that's what the technical review will be about. And you'll get that technical review for the first meeting in July is anticipated to be the schedule. We'll spend some time that evening talking through that, talking through some approaches and sort of more thoroughly defining the scope of work for zoning amendments from that point forward. So the scope of work suggests that we will spend some time in August doing community engagement. So that has two components. It has a presentation around housing choice. The concept there is to both provide an informational presentation that would get information out into the community about a diversity of housing types and some of that missing middle housing concept and how that relates to Brattleboro. It's also an opportunity for community members who are interested in housing to, or have concerns, to come and share their thoughts and ideas with us before we get started. So it's a both a feedback and input option our evening and, and also a, an informational, educational component. And then the idea would be to follow that presentation up with the walking tours. So the proposal had four of those walking tours in it. We've reduced that down to two. You got a revised project budget memo and work plan from me, like this, that showed how I reallocated that around with the idea that there would be two of those walking tours. And once again, it's both an educational component and an opportunity to, to, to get information in from community members who participate. One of the big reasons to go out and, and to actually go on the walking tours is that, you know, the regulations is the place where you go from having these conceptual policy conversations about housing to having to make some quantitative and classification decisions. You know, you have to actually get that defined. You have to, like you were just talking about, the list of uses and the definitions. You have to figure out what housing, what kind of housing, where, what the dimensional standards are. So going out and actually touring around, seeing what's on the ground now, getting an understanding of densities and, and dimensional requirements out there in the real world will hopefully make that part of the job a little less abstract and give you some visuals and understanding of what the numbers on the page of the zoning districts actually corresponds to in terms of build form in your community. So that gets us through August. And then as we roll into the fall months, we'll actually be looking at proposed zoning amendments. So it would be in your September time slot for that. And then getting and having another public meeting probably in October. And that would focus on the zoning amendments and getting feedback on those before you finalize them towards the end of the year. With the goal that by the time you get to the end of the year, you have some draft zoning amendments to take forward through the adoption process as well as NDA mapping and application materials to update your downtown neighborhood development area and to proceed forward with a West Brattleboro one, if you so choose to do that. The other interesting thing that's happened in the past couple of weeks is that the legislature has, and I believe the governor has signed some legislation that changes the program requirements for the NDA, which actually could expand the area that you could get into your NDA in both the downtown and in West Brattleboro, probably. The requirement, it's my understanding, I have yet to go through and read the statute. I have to do this soon. But it's my understanding that the flood restrictions that really affected your NDA, your downtown NDA have been lifted. And so getting some or all of that area that you couldn't get in previously may be possible now. So that's something to be, that we can look at as we move forward. So any questions about the scope of work and the overall arc of what we're doing or things that you want to share with me?
I have a couple things.
Great.
Regarding the walking tours, the, the selection committee, I guess if that's what we called it, of Sarah, Gary, myself, and then Steve and Sue, we, we, I think, if I can speak for all of us, it seemed like we were generally in support of reducing it from four to two or so, but with the kind of caveat that if it seems like the public is really showing up and they're well attended, then, then to maybe that would justify increasing them back to three or four. It sounds like you, you know, you were really pushing the value of them right there, Brandy, but, but, but we kind of had doubts, not of the value of taking walking tours, but as being a public outreach strategy and, and people showing up. So I think if it does seem like there's a lot of attendance and, you know, it's, it's worthwhile for public outreach after the first one or two, then, you know, it, it could, it could, it could at least personally convince me to re-expand it back to three or four.
And I mean, that's something we can look at as we sort of roll into the fall months as well. So if the, the two in August are particularly well attended, if we're thinking that, you know, as we get to maybe the latter part of September or early October, you want to do some additional ones, we would have the ability to probably fold those in as part of that next chunk of public outreach that you've got in the schedule. So we can adapt.
Good. Yeah. So we can just all keep that in mind. And then the other thing is that in the work plan, I think it's every plan, every regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, there will be an hour or maybe more of the time for this. And it is a, you know, we all, I think, understand this is a, a major, you know, planning commission project along, you know, with you and staff for this year. But I was wondering if the two meetings that are, the August one is called a public presentation and the October one is a community meeting, if those could be, and they're, and they're scheduled to be at planning commission meetings instead of like today's kickoff meeting is just for us. It's not for the, I mean.
Yeah, if you wanted to move those.
Those be moved? Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can look at, you know, alternative nights. And when I put together the schedule, I kept to your regular nights because I know you're definitely already booked for those and available, but we can, we can look at availability going forward if you want to adjust those. And I do have another group that I'm working with that's on the same meeting schedule as you, which is why I did slot your meetings into the, what would be your, normally your first meeting of the month. But there is also the possibility of some flexibility around juggling those a bit. Particularly when I can do them via Zoom. So I can do like I did tonight and do one and then another, back to back. So, you know, if, if that, if the scheduling does start to conflict with other items on your agenda, we can work through it.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. We don't need to commit right now, but I just wanted to hear that, that there's flexibility. Okay. That's all I have. Any, any comments from commissioners so far or, or the member of the public? No? Okay, why don't you continue, Brandy?
Okay, so I briefly popped that revised work plan up, and I think we've, we've already pretty much covered this, but yes, with the reduction in that neighborhood walk component and the likely increase of NDA mapping that needs to be done. That's, that's the reason for the hour swaps around. But the good thing about the Minister of Planning Grant Program is the number at the end is, is, is cast in stone, but they don't really care if you move it, you move stuff around in between the categories so much. So we do have flexibility to, to, to be responsive as we go forward and put the time where it's needed and, and shift things around. So we'll do that. So that leaves the third topic, which is thinking about where you might want to go on walking tours. So Sue and I have talked a little bit about this. I've got three potential routes for your consideration. They are all in the sort of 1.2 to 1.4 mile range in terms of walks. So probably a 60 to 90 minute meeting time slot to, to go out and, and do those. Haven't actually timed it yet or figured out exactly where we'd stop on each of them, but I think we should be planning for something in that range. So the idea would be to look at these, talk about the pros and cons of, of, of each of them as a destination and get some guidance from, from you all about where you think you might get the most value out of these, these walks. So, so I'm going to need now to share the mapping computer. Okay, so this is one of the innovations of, of COVID and remote meetings that I love the most. It's actually being able to have my mapping computer live while I'm talking to, to people. It's, it's actually very effective. So we'll start with a walk that would start at the municipal building. And let's wait for the screen to redraw here. I'll put the photo on. So this is the municipal building and I'm going to get my little highlighter here. Can never find it when I need it. So if we start out from the municipal building, went over essentially to the Harris parking lot and through the parking lots that would give a chance to look at an infill housing opportunity aimed up around Tyler Street. Actually, I guess we're probably go up a little bit and then you start to walk down, I guess. Around Harris Ave and come back up Putney. We could look down Bradley and North from, from the edge there, loop back either along the street or through the park, over to Chapin and then Oak and Grove and back into the back of the municipal building. So that's, that's one loop that we could go and look at. So what this loop gets us is, and I'm going to turn the air photo off for a moment. So it gets us a look at neighborhoods of different eras. So different, we'll see different development patterns and housing types. There is some multi-unit housing, particularly along Chapin. There's less of that over on, towards the riverside of this walk. That's mostly a single unit development. So it's probably, it's a little bit more diverse in terms of era of construction, but it still is a primarily single unit neighborhood settings, but from different time periods.
It's interesting, actually, Brandy, Tyler Street has, there's more units than I think might be realized.
This, yeah, so this is, yeah, this is the 911 point. So the level of accuracy is, you know, 911 level.
There's even a tiny house in one of the backyards of Tyler Street.
Okay, so yeah, so there may be, there may be some more. This is sort of a roughest guide. The, it's kind of funny. The 911 points are, they don't, they don't get too concerned about the classifications. So this, what is, what's multi and what's not is a kind of guesswork more than really the gospel truth, let me tell you. So you gotta, you gotta check that out. We will check that out more thoroughly. the gospel truth. Let me tell you. So you gotta, you gotta check that out. We will check that out more thoroughly, but it does give you some sense of the mix of what you might expect to find in these neighborhoods. So that's the first walk. Um, that one is probably the, I think that was the longest of the bunch. So that's the 1.4 mile, um, walk. And of course there's a chunk of that, sort of a long Putney, walking back through where it's not really super productive. We're just walking to get to the next destination. So I'll turn these off. When the next one would be down along, um, Canal and South Main.
Brandy, sorry, before you leave that one, could we, could we stick with the first one first? Just as a, uh, question and possible addition. I know this might lengthen it a bit, but to go, uh, One Tasticit, farther north and then come back on Putney Road farther down. Uh, might be, might be useful, or even just to go out and back on Putney Road would be my goal.
Yeah. So I did have the loop drawn to go down One Tasticit, uh, initially, and that makes it a two mile loop, which gets to sort of the edge of, you, you sort of catch, at the end of Harris, you catch a little bit of the same built pattern that you're going to find along most of One Tasticit. Um, so you know, that, that, I agree that that actually is a, is an interesting walk in terms of neighborhood layout and definitely speaks to sort of several different eras of residential construction in Brattleboro. But, uh, in an effort to try to keep them under one and a half miles, I did cut it back. So that was the reason there. I mean, we could think about starting from a different point and not start from the municipal building, but start, we're trying to start from someplace where people could park, um, if they were going to come and join the walks. So we are trying to start from some reasonable, uh, location. If we started from one of the parking lots over here, we might be able to, to do a different loop.
Okay. Well, just to add maybe a spur at the very top of the map there, out to Vermont Ave. That little area would be really
Open here. Yeah.
Out and back maybe, or if you could make that little loop, uh, out to Eaton and Shore Drive. That's just a, yeah. There's a, there's some multi-families there, but.
Yeah, I did. I, that's actually the loop I had in here initially was walk, went over to Eaton and then around, but that, yeah. That came in at two miles. And Sue said it was too far to walk and I kind of agreed with her. At least in a, in an hour to 90 minutes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah. I, yeah, from a, from a standpoint, and you know, one of the other things we could think about too, is if there are some areas that where you think that the information is valuable, we could sort of set up some self-guided walks as well, or some extensions to our major loop that, you know, people can continue out. Because what I will be doing with these is putting together a, a loop map and sort of handout that will talk a little bit about, you know, give some examples of, of houses and, and properties along the loop, what you know, the densities are, what the setbacks and dimensional standards are, maybe sort of what the era of various neighborhoods are. Um, so there'll be some background information. So some of that could be done in sort of a self-guided tour option to, if you want to be more expansive. So I'm going to loop down here to the next one. And if we don't have anything more on that one. And turn these building footprints off. So we're just looking at the air photo. So this one could start at the, um, parking lot behind, behind the Holstein, uh, center. I was thinking about which, which way is the misery worse to walk uphill slowly? Downhill quickly and then have to, yeah. So this one is, is probably the hardest walk in terms of elevation change, but is for, for the point of view of seeing some of the more, the densest neighborhoods in downtown and of greater range of housing types is probably one of the more effective, um, routes that we could come up with. So let's go around, uh, and head out on Canal Street, come down around Clark. Go around Homestead and Horton, down Washington to Central, over to South Main and back up to the parking lot. So that's the, the loop. And if we turn off the air photo and you look at that, you'll see that there's, uh, quite a mix of, um, single unit and multi-unit, uh, properties in there. There's obviously some historic. And I believe that was, was worker housing neighborhoods there on Homestead and Horton. So you know, when we talk about that missing middle piece, um, in New England, so that work, that worker housing model of, the types of housing really definitely fall into that category really well. And our examples, sort of historic examples of the types of housing that might fit in that definition. So that's, that's, that's nice to be able to include. Um, there's some, some pretty small dense lots in here, um, as well. So good examples of what, you know, you're going to see in terms of lot coverages and setbacks and things. So thoughts on this one?
I guess I'll wait for the third one, but I think that one looks important to include, but let's see what you got for the third one too.
Okay.
Just a quick question. If you could give a sense of the pace of how much time you would spend, you know, in certain areas, maybe because, you know, there might be some places you want to stop for longer periods of time.
Yeah, I haven't, I obviously haven't sketched out the whole thing yet, but what, yeah, the idea would be to have, um, points of stopping along the way. And, and choose, um, a number of those, uh, they would, along the route. Hope, you know, where we could get a sort of look up and down a street in some instances, or where we might look at a particular property or something. So, you know, and it's a lot easier to obviously to stop and talk in a small group and then move to the next thing, next area and sort of stop and talk than it is to try to talk, um, particularly where we're on the heavier trafficked streets, kind of while we're in movement. So.
I, Brandy, I just want to say, um, I like this route. I think we need to be careful about whether we're walking up or down Washington Street. To me, that seems like the longer hill than, than kind of the South Main Street. But, um, what I also think is important for the rest of you to know about this is, you know, this isn't kind of an area, particularly the, the Clark and those neighborhoods, Estbrook, Lawrence. But even sometimes up on Washington Street where we have an issue with our setbacks, because, um, these tend to be older historic, uh, lots. You know, small houses, very small lots. So I think it'll be important for the public to see that. Sort of we're reducing setbacks and that kind of thing. There's, there's enough of that madness.
Yeah, these, you know, are historically built, very dense. Essentially workforce housing, um, from, from another era, but there's some more recent infill in there as well. So.
And a bonus for both of these areas that we just looked at, um, Clark, Canal, Horton, Homestead, they're part of our historic overlay district, which I'm sure you'll hear more about from the design review committee when we have a, a joint meeting later this month.
Okay. So the other, the third, uh, walk is up in West Brattleboro. West Brattleboro, uh, does not lend itself as well to loops. But, um, we've got sort of a multi-pronged effort here. So this walk would start, uh, essentially at the fire station. Um, and then it would go out to, um, see both along Western Avenue and then take these spurs off. So we could go down Glen Street. Could go down Garfield Drive. We could go down Greenleaf, um, a short distance and, and see some more. We say recent, but they're, they're not exactly new, but, um, post-war, uh, residential neighborhoods. And the same thing going, um, down on the return trip, uh, down South Street, although there aren't, um, sidewalks down here, which does make that a little more challenging. But that does give us an opportunity to look at a potential infill site, um, down there at the, um, former motel and, um, at the, at, you know, another, uh, era of subdivision as well. So we could see several different, um, forms and, and time periods of housing here. Turn this on. So you've got the stuff along Western Avenue, which is a, a mix of single and multi-units with some commercial, uh, infill. You've got the multi-unit housing on Garfield, mobile homes on Glen Street. And then single unit, um, primarily on the, the other areas in Greenleaf and down South Street. So thoughts on that loop?
I just think it's good that you're including that because, uh, you know, it'd be a very different feel than the two downtown ones, the two downtown neighborhood loops. You know, a lot of the homes there are newer, right?
Um, I think.
Not all of them.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll have, you'll have some, I don't know what the, I, is the stuff on Garfield from the late eighties, early nineties, Sue?
I think it's the eighties.
Yeah, it's old. Yep. And then.
1880s?
No, 1980s.
I mean, it's public. Stuff too, like
There's no historical.
Probably also eighties.
I think so. Yeah. It could be seventies. It's, it's not. Yeah, it's, it's not that new.
You know, it's, I've, I've been doing, um, a lot of, of town plan housing stuff for the last, uh, two years. And so basically the new housing is from the seventies and eighties, um, in almost all these communities, right? There's, there's the, with, with housing really stopped being built at some point in the 1990s in almost all the communities that, you know, I work in around Vermont and actually New Hampshire as well. So there's very, very little that's, that's more recent than that. So this is the new housing.
That's what I meant.
Yep.
It's an interesting one. I mean, so you, you know, I wanted to include it for geographic diversity as well as kind of, you know, thinking about the different housing types that are here. However, if we're only doing two walking tours, that means we need to choose two. So that makes it, makes it tough unless staff runs a couple, or, you know, we find that they're successful and, you know, try to reallocate for the fall. So.
Right. So we've got three choices and two slots.
Tom, I've got to comment on the third one. What about, I don't, I don't know Thera Ridge that well, but there's been some fairly new housing as, you know, within the context of this discussion we're having on Country Hill. And that would avoid having to drive, uh, walk up South Street without sidewalks. Which I think would be a little challenging for a group. I don't really know the traffic counts there, but.
We've got traffic counts on South Street. We often get, um, complaints about South Street and, um, well, I don't want to put anybody at risk, having people walk up South Street. Could be good for the walk bike plan too. Um, no.
So can you orient me where is Country Hill? Which way, which?
It's right off of where you end on Greenleaf. It's that cul-de-sac up there.
Is that cul-de-sac? Yeah. Of course there aren't sidewalks there either, but assumably there's fewer cars.
Yeah. It's a, it's a closed loop sort of thing.
Yeah. The one nice thing about this one, and I do have, I don't have the parcels turned on. This is interesting. I don't know what, I haven't looked yet to see what era these are, but these are actually small lots. So if we look at, I mean, you can, we don't need the parcel line to actually see them because they have, several of them have fences. But, um, these are really, it's kind of an interesting, um, much tighter, but still current, um, subdivision.
I think the other thing.
The country line.
You know, I, I definitely share the concern about walking up South Street, but, um, Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust does own the Chalet property and they have talked about infill on that. You know, so it could be an interesting opportunity because I think that's an area to look at for the NDA as well. So. Just throw that out there.
It, it's also interesting topographically, you'll be able to see a long distance from some of those vantage points, you know, you'll be able to point things out that are fairly like, um, on this map, you could see down the hill toward Western Ave, you know, um, could see quite a lot from some of those areas. But I was going to say it might be simpler and I, I appreciate the out and backs here, but the cul-de-sac nature of that whole area could be covered by picking, you know, or focusing on one cul-de-sac and then going out and back from that or something to that effect. There'd also be plenty of parking. I don't know. But I'm not, I'm not so sure. We're pretty much all familiar with Western Ave. And I see the spine of this is sort of Western Ave. You can see Western Ave from some of these vantage points. So I'm thinking if you were to do something, uh, up Greenleaf, you know, or even farther down Western Ave, you could, you know, uh, Stockwell Drive there and all of that carriage hill, that, that's interesting, but I don't know what kind of cross-section you're trying to get at. But just to kind of have a, a loop of some kind integrated into this would be interesting. That, that loop right there, by the way, is super popular, uh, for Halloween. And so just as an example, I mean, I've brought my kids there many years and it's like, that's a walking route that's, you know, interesting, but depends on what housing you're, you're, you want to look at.
It's too bad some of these, uh, lollipop neighborhoods don't connect. And I, I guess they don't because they don't want through traffic, you know.
Well, it's the, I think it's the topography. Really, a lot of it's the geography. There's some drop-offs and.
Oh, okay.
It's poor planning.
Yeah.
That too.
Rules that didn't require it, you know, no foresight into connecting neighborhoods, which is better.
Well, some of them are connected. They're just, you have to know where to go. They're not official.
Yeah, this one here is close. It looks like people definitely, uh, at least on foot.
Yeah, that's a walking path. Yep.
Yeah. But, uh, yes. You don't, they don't quite go through.
If we walk around that area though, I mean, we're just seeing the same thing. All that's the same style. I mean, it'd be important to see it for a part, but we don't need to make the entire walk just one style.
I know I had mentioned going down Garfield. I mean, if we wanted to see different, more apartment style housing, but you know, I don't, I don't know that it's necessary or even to seek one park. Just brought diversity of housing type, like, you know, in my mind, but.
I mean, I think there's, you know, even if we don't walk them, there could be some value to at least doing the analysis of what the density is that you're getting out of these types of, um, developments. I suspect that both of these are actually going to be lower density than you think they are. You know, and then the perception, um, is that, you know, this apartment style has a lot of open land that goes with it. Um, and so it's not going to come in at that high of a density. Yeah. Actually, probably the mobile home park's not going to be that high actually either. Certainly not compared to the stuff that's, you know.
I, I also wonder, I think there are three stories out at Hayes Court. I think it's three. I know that it is, I think it does have some accessible units, but I actually don't know if there are elevators in there. You get to that three-story height thing. So, um, there could be interesting things to talk about there.
Sue, could you read the comments or could Brandy?
Yep, I was going to do that. So, hold on. Lena asked, any possibility of making the West Brattleboro tour a bike tour, cover a little more ground? Dan said. Dan said, maybe goal of all these walking tours for a future self-guided bike ride. I, I think my one concern with making it a bike tour is it's even, it could be even less accessible to some people.
Usually you want to introduce it with walking, but it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we, you know, once we have the materials made, you know, like I said, they could definitely be somewhat self-guided as well for people who can't make the time slot or, or whatever that we, we end up in. So certainly could, could do that.
Brandy, if we end up picking, because we're gonna somehow make a decision and pick two out of three, I think, right now or in a few minutes, if we do go with the West Brattleboro, one is one of the two, do you think there's a time of day or day of the week or both where there, where we can combine there being relatively minimal traffic at the same time as, you know, being a popular time for, for attracting people to come out?
I would have to think through that and probably have a bit more of a conversation with Sue. I'm not sure what the, I don't know South Street well enough to know what the traffic generation
Sure.
situation is there and what the, what, what that's like, but we could definitely take that into consideration in terms of picking the times. I think I was somewhat envisioning that these might be just sort of end of workday, but pre-dinner time slots as a possibility. But we could also, you know, we've tried to do things like with the downtown plan, we did try to do some weekend things. We didn't get great participation with that previously, but that would be another possibility would be to have it sort of on a, a weekend, probably more of a morning activity.
I, I bring it up mainly because if, if along Putney Road or Canal Street or Western Ave, you're, you would ever be planning on, you know, talking while you're walking and there's a line of people behind you. I mean, there's no way the majority of people are going to be able to hear. It's gonna.
I do have a, a very small boombox, which I have used to this before, which does help a little bit. But it is, it is a concern. And that's, that's actually one of the things I actually, I, I'm a bit worried about the first one I showed you that does go so long on Putney Road. I think the one down around Canal Street, most of that is on the residential streets, and there's only short segments that are on the more main streets. So that's got some benefits there. But yes, the one here in West Brattleboro does spend quite a bit of time on Western Ave. Now, we can obviously, you know, walk down the side streets to have the sort of stop and talk pieces. But yeah, that, that is a concern.
Sarah wrote in the chat, Route Nine is pretty busy weekdays during commute time.
And, and around three o'clock, around school drop-off time or pickup time.
Lena wrote, the end academy pickups is probably earlier than these tours would be, but I'm always amazed at how much traffic there is then. So, yeah, we can work on the timing.
Okay. Does anyone have a, a, a way to narrow this down? A convincing statement, a, a voting technique, anything?
Well, I think if I had sole power to choose, which I don't, but if it were up to me, I would, I would probably do the West Brat one and the, like, Canal Washington one, just, I think, merely one to just avoid Putney Road and to give a diversity of different types of housing. Yeah, I think that would be my vote. I mean, I prefer, I think, the two, like, more downtown ones, but I think having the, you know, more rural housing examples would be beneficial.
And if we feel like these are a success, then the, the third one can, then we can actually do that one, right?
Yeah.
I would, I would choose those two if we had to. You know, if we can only do two, I would choose those two as well.
Dan, what do you think?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing and, and that Putney Road is, if it's avoidable, then probably not ideal.
Okay, I'm in favor too. Great.
Okay, so. Because there is lots of people that walk Putney Road all the time. So just a note.
Oh, for sure.
Like wanting to walk Putney Road, but people have to do it a lot. I don't know, something to mull over.
No, I love that area. It's just that it's, it's got some, it's got enough similarities with both that it's kind of redundant, in my opinion, but yeah.
Yeah, I think the two you selected are probably the most directly relevant to the zoning amendment work, so probably, in some ways, they're good choices to, to go with. So the next step would be to work up more detailed maps and to think about stops along the way and such. So you'll be seeing those materials and we'll refine those as we go along. But we just wanted to get a sense from tonight's so that we have time to, to make sure we get these, get everything put together because that'll take a little bit and get, start getting the word out about when we're gonna do them. So we have to talk about timing next, I guess, but not tonight. Okay, so unless anyone else has something, that's everything on my agenda.
Yeah, Dan.
Actually, I'm wondering what other tour, uh, general vicinity is you considered other than those three, just to, maybe if you could give us like the, the main.
Yeah. I, I had five, so these are actually on my screen numbered five, one through five. So that was one, three, and five. I looked at the area that is north of the hospital. So let me pull.
Yeah, it was Maple. Maple came up around Southern, which has amazing views of downtown, if you're not familiar with Southern Ave.
Yeah, and I think it wrapped around to Locust and.
Esteville.
Esteville, yeah, yep. So it was in that vicinity. And then the other one we looked at was down around the high school and sort of went toward, did a, um, some, a little bit of South Main and caught some of the side streets off of that. And then I think it looped around, caught a little bit of Clark and, and came back down maybe.
Good country acre, right? Sunny Side Acre.
Yep.
It was a long, it, it was one of the longer routes. It was one of.
It was a two-mile one again. So, and, and trying to figure out how to cut that one was a bit more challenging in terms of finding a place where we could sort of have a meeting starting point with parking and such, but it was, it's another area where, you know, with that kind of a walk, you can tour a fair amount of different types of housing and, and, and eras of building as well. So those were the other two that I was sketching around with, trying to find something that would work for the purposes.
And was there ever an option considered of having like a van or something, you know, like a guided tour in a van or, just something of that sort?
Didn't think about that. That sort of was thinking of a, a walking tour, a.
No, I get it. I'm just wondering if, you know, if that was ever, you know, because, for accessibility reasons, but also maybe for covering more ground, you know.
I have a question that came to me by looking at your document review, Brandy. On the fourth page, kind of in the middle, Natural Resources Action 11.1.1. It says, you know, this, this is of our, our town plan, one of, one of the actions in it. It says, the end of it says, comment on applications submitted to the Vermont Wetlands offices as necessary to ensure the above. Sue or, or Brandy, is, is this something that the Planning Commission could be doing? You know, as far as flexing our influence?
Yeah.
To the state? Okay.
We very rarely, we, we don't have many Class One and Two wetlands in Brattleboro.
That's, that's all that, it doesn't apply to Class Three?
Yeah, those are the only ones that need the permit, right? So yeah, so we don't, I can think of one, maybe several years ago off of Vernon Street that I think we did comment on.
Okay.
But it has to be Class One or Two.
Is it one of those things where if, if it comes up, then the applicant is just required to, to, you know, to, to CC us? Kind of like the.
No, it doesn't usually come from the applicant. It usually comes from the state.
But, but they give it to us. We don't have to be on the lookout for it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, fine then.
And I just realized I had skipped over the document review. So actually, we didn't finish all the agenda items. Jumped right into the walking chores from our first discussion. So, so you saw the, the document review memo. I tried to organize the topics in the town plan into sort of themes around housing. There, you know, this is the, the baseline really of what your regulations need to do, which is implement the town plan. I think you've, you've had one town plan amendment since you adopted the zoning, but it wasn't really a significant change in policy direction. And I think, so in reality, most of these policies were the policies in place when you did the major zoning revision back in, what, 2014? So I, I expect that we'll find that most of this aligns and we're really going to be down to the question of how effective and is there ways to tweak things to make them more effective and, you know, in the past, which is really 10 years since you worked on that 2012 town plan. You know, priorities and emphasis have shifted perhaps, if not the actual policy direction is sort of where you're focusing your energies as a municipality or, or what, what, what sort of are seen as the, 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 the more weighty issues. So one of the things you're always running into, and you, you just pulled a section, the natural resources goal, is that, you know, you have housing policies, but those have to be considered in relation to the other community goals and policies in the plan. And so you do have a, a range of other things that as we go forward, it's good to check back into those. I know that, you know, you kind of can sometimes look at an element of the regulations and like, well, what is that trying to, to do? Why do we have that piece? And there may be other goals outside of the immediate housing policies that tie in to some of those choices. A lot of those other things are resource-related. You know, natural resource protection or historic resource protection, but there was also some additional land use goals and some transportation things that are, are linked in as well. So if there was anything else that you guys have, have seen come through and have worked on in past years that you think would be good to be considering and checking in on to see if what to do for, if what, if the regulations are implementing the recommendations that came from other plans and studies that didn't look at here, you can, can let me know about those, but so far, this is the three documents that we will be considering.
And I know that you've mentioned the states or the Congress for New Urbanisms, you know, work on the zoning for great neighborhoods and enabling better places. And, you know, that, those aren't, for commissioners who don't know, those are not Brattleboro, you know, projects. Well, actually, one of them is kind of utilizing that and applying it to Brattleboro with recommendations. And I feel like we've talked about it in the last couple of years, but we've never did a deep dive into it. So now might be the chance.
Yeah. You see, I mean, one of the things that you'll see in those recommendations that's going to, to, to generate conversation around how to address this in your regulations is they, they more broadly recommend, you know, not having density standards at all, but relying on other dimensional requirements to, and that to regulate density sort of de facto, but not do it directly. And then there's also recommendations around parking and setbacks that, you know, will fit probably some of your neighborhoods well, but in other neighborhoods, maybe, you know, something to have more conversation about. So that's, that's something that we'll look at as we go along. They've kind of, I'm trying to remember exactly how many categories they've got, two or, no, I guess there's three maybe different categories they've got in the Enabling Better Places guide in terms of different neighborhood types. And so thinking about the places that we're looking at around your community in Brattleboro, West Brattleboro, sort of where, where do those fit in that structure? And then what works for you and what doesn't in those recommendations?
Sounds good.
Yeah, Brandy, that actually reminds me. We have a memo, I'm not sure I sent it to you, where they did look directly at Brattleboro and our regulations and talked about some of our sticking points. So I will send that to you.
Yes. I, I had this vague thought in my head that I remember you saying they did that, and then I went and looked for it on the website and I didn't find it. So that was on my list of things.
Okay.
So that's great.
Well, maybe you should get access to our Google Drive folder. It's on there.
Is it in there? I'll give her access.
Yeah. Any chance I can do to plug our Drive folder, I do it.
Oh, yeah, while we're on that. Can I have edit access to that?
Sue's in charge.
It's my, it's my Google Drive folder. It, it might have to, you know, revert to something different. I, it's taken up all my Google space, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I have the, the same problem with my Dropbox space. I use it for some community and then they don't come and download their files that I like. I'm like, you have to take your files away because somebody else needs your space, like limited capacity here.
Okay. Well, before you go, Brandy, if you are going to go, and I assume you are because you're busy. I think staff has already shared with you this, this memo that, that, this list that Steve put together and we're going to be talking about next of just, just kind of all the potential regs that add costs to housing development. And we're going to talk about it next and just put some just rough prioritizing on it for moving forward. So that will certainly get a lot of ideas to you as well.
Yes, Sue did send that over and I have taken a look at that.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you, Brandy. We'll be seeing you soon.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay. Okay, most of you should remember this, this topic from last month. Steve revised the list of land use regs that may potentially add cost to housing development and shared it with all of us. I'm hoping that we can somehow come up with a way to prioritize this, not necessarily really specifically and but just kind of generally kind of, you know, what we're interested in, what we're not interested in. Because after this, you know, there's still gonna be, for the ones we work on, will, you know, us or staff or, you know, PlaySense will draft changes and then we'll review them then and make changes or not. And then, you know, they're not final until an actual public hearing. So this is just trying to, trying to start guiding the ship. So, but Steve, do you have anything to say about the memo being revised or?
So I can say as, as little or as much as, as we're needing. I suppose I can just frame it by saying this was meant to just point out, generally speaking, any possible areas of our regulations that might add, theoretically add some costs to housing development. These haven't been analyzed for their actual added costs. That could certainly be something that's worth doing. But this was sort of a thought exercise on, let's conceptualize where we might be adding regulations or materials or labor, et cetera, just anything that would increase the cost of providing a housing unit in any part of our regulations. And so that's not. And so that's not inherently to say that all of these are bad and need to go. But rather was hoping to structure a conversation where we could all sort of have a participatory conversation where we think about what our planning values are. And are these particular regulations achieving the planning goals that we think are important? Could they be tweaked to achieve that without adding any cost or adding less cost to the development of housing? And do we think that the trade off is worth having in certain cases? I suspect that there are several of these that we are going to find are willing, we're willing to continue having because we find that that trade off is worth it. But there are some of these that I expect are not going to be popular to continue having. And I, I certainly would be willing to throw my way behind a few of them as being certainly the, the biggest offenders, I guess, of, of added costs to the supply side of housing. But as, as I understand, folks have done some homework, I guess.
I hope so. Yeah. I think that would make it easier. You know, obviously the chair could not be packing so much into every meeting and we could spend a lot of time talking about things. But I'm hoping that people kind of reviewed things in advance and, you know, have come with preferences and they can just kind of be compiled and then hopefully it's a decent way to do so. Sarah, you shared a few with me that, that you, that you felt were important and I marked those down.
Would it be helpful if I share the screen?
I guess so. Yeah. When I went through it, I, I guess I was kind of feeling like maybe we have a lot of capacity going forwards, especially, you know, with PlaySense on our side this year. And I kind of, I think I, I just kind of did it binary ways. And I felt like about, what does that, this work out to? Maybe 60% or two thirds of them? I felt like, all right, those, I think, I think we should move forward with those. And then about a third I, I Xed out. And so I compiled that on them. You know, next to each, there's about 30 different regs here or 30 different categories of regulations.
I love this whole document.
Yeah.
So if, if it would be helpful, I could sort of, I guess, introduce the categories of regulations. That would go on or?
Maybe. I mean, no, no, um, no judgment, but I want to hear from Dan and Prudence, you know, you guys, if, you know, if you've looked at it in advance or if not, it's no worries.
I read through it, but I don't have a prioritized list.
Okay. Dan, thoughts?
I, I guess there, the, the buffering or boundary fencing and that kind of stuff, if there are,
Can you point to the letter? I mean, where it is?
It's number three, D3 amenity requirements. I
Okay.
And, uh, you know, this is just kind of a general one. I'm not actually sure if it goes under design requirements, but height requirements, is that a, is that in here somewhere?
Yeah, I think that would fit under A3.
A3.
Are you talking about the height of a fence, Dan?
No, 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 uh, of the structure.
Okay. Yeah, that would be.
A3.
Yeah.
A3. Yeah. Height, there you go. Sorry. I just didn't remember where it was. Yeah.
So, yeah, that you see that as a dimensional or a density restriction, I suppose. It's sort of between the two. But, um, yeah, the height of the fences itself, that reminds me, I should make public comment at the end of this meeting, but, uh, or advocate on behalf of a public comment that was given to us.
I think, you know, all of A seems really important to me. All of F. I think procedure, procedural requirements throw a lot of barriers into small scale development. And especially if it's small scale development, you know, people don't typically have like cash to throw around while they're waiting for a, approval or a permit or something. So really lessening the amount of time people have to wait to, to move on projects, I think is really important. And then parking. So those were sort of my, my three, all of A, all of F and the parking, which is like D7 or something. Yeah, D7. I'm in, I'm in favor of like digging into those in whatever way we can.
Yeah, I'll just say that of the ones I checked off, they, they overlap with that pretty well. I have a lot more checks too. However, there was one where I, you know, that, that Sarah has interest in, you know, pursuing there, but I, I have an X next to it and I want to hear some kind of response maybe from, from anyone about this. And it was for the, um, the planned unit development review. And I was, I was a little hesitant to, um, you know, to, to support the idea of working on that one because, um, you know, the, the planned unit developments are kind of an exception to our, our districts. And so if we, I don't know, if we like remove some sort of oversight of them, then it just seems like like a way to, to kind of bypass our regs, like our standard regs. I don't know. I mean, I know that, I think that just means that it's, that the DRB is going to have less oversight and then it just falls to the, you know, administrative side, right? Actually, no, that's not what that one's saying. It's just saying less, less potentially remove DRB review.
So I, I could add
Yeah, please. Thank you.
No answer clarity. Specifically, the reason why I include this is simply just because needing a planned unit development requires you to go through the process of multiple DRB hearings. That's just how it is on our, you know, regulations at the moment. I am not sure to what extent that's dictated by statute. But if we were to streamline the process so that fewer kinds of development that are worth having, whatever metric that is that we use to decide what is good development, we would be able to have more administrative approvals without needing a back channel to provide flexibility. Uh, we could have that important tool still for the times that we do need flexibility. Uh, but that would allow for less review time in, in hearings and more administratively approval housing. Uh, oftentimes it seems to be that it's dimensional aspects. So housing proposals that are denser than what is otherwise allowed is what's triggering planned unit development requirements. But even more specifically, there is one regulation in the 100th chapters. I cited it this morning in an email. I can't remember off the top of my head. But the requirement that you can only have one single family home per lot uh, without needing a planned unit development, uh, that is potentially quite limiting. It seems to be narrowly defined specifically to the single family detached homes. So potentially that is fine to have. But, um, that's just an example of something that is an immediate trigger for needing to go through this entire process. And having only a few menu options for what you would need to fit quite a lot more regulations, that is to say. If, if you're needing a planned unit development, you're needing to go through one of, I think, four, maybe five pathways. Uh, not every zoning category, uh, not every district allows for each one of these planned unit developments as well. So, um, I think it, it's quite a convoluted process. So if we were able to really tweak our base zoning to allow for virtually everything we can think of that is acceptable, that would allow for much less planned unit development.
Yeah. In general. Oh, yeah. I know. I'm in support of that. But that wouldn't, that wouldn't, um, that doesn't speak, you know, that last part doesn't speak to the multiple hearing aspect of the PUD. I mean, that's, so like one example you brought up about, you know, B1 is the limit on principal structures, only one per lot. And so I, yeah, I totally hear you that, that that would, um, you know, finding some way to expand that to not be just one, but without being, you know, some sort of sprawl on large acreage plots. That would be a way to use the PUD less. Yeah, no, I, I, all I'm saying is I'm just not sure. It, it just, I, I, I could go either way, but the, the, removing the, the, the requirements of review for the PUD didn't, didn't seem compelling to me. But, I mean, if we can work on all these, I think, great. And I mean, draft them at least.
Yeah. In the grand scheme of all of these, I think the potential cost that's actually added by having to go through two hearings for a planned unit development is probably not very high. I, I guess it would depend on what kind of proposal you have. If, if someone's hired a bunch of professionals who are going to show up to the hearing, then maybe that runs up a cost for them. But if there are any delays in that permitting that caused them to need to return, then that could. But the second hearing itself is, is not really a, a very, that's not one of the biggest essential fixes that we've got here. But in, in the, uh, in an effort to be exhaustive, I, I included it.
Yeah, no, you included everything you could think of or find.
I'd be, I'd be interested in knowing, um, just in your opinion, obviously, like you haven't done the calculations, but like, based on your review of all this, like what do you think are the top? Like if we had to categorize it by like saving, you know, a small developer the biggest amount of money. Obviously it, it depends on the project type and all that stuff, but like, we're just being general here. What would be the things that you think could save Joe Schmo some, some dough?
I would say the principal structure limit is probably one of them. I mean, we've heard more recently from larger developers parking. I don't know how much it impacts the, you know, smaller scale developer. It's hard to quantify the, the setbacks and the height limitations, but we definitely, you know, they come up frequently, but I don't know cost wise.
Do you think that's more just, it's more of a hat, less of a monetary issue and just more of a hassle?
I suppose I, I'd say as well, when I was making this list, I was thinking not only in terms of direct financial costs added, but also opportunity cost lost. And so things like the height limits setbacks, uh, lot coverage, all of the different dimensional standards that reduce the amount of buildable land outside of what market forces would otherwise be willing to bear. That to me seems like, um, depending on the zone, some of, some of our districts are quite out of whack with what I think is likely what could be potentially developed. Uh, and so that's a very, at least in, in my understanding, quite a high opportunity cost added or, or lost rather, uh, whereas it's probably not adding any direct cost. But it is maybe taking away from potential profit as well as just, uh, the overall size of a development that could happen. Ultimately, I would say the, the biggest potential cost, as far as I understand, would be of course parking minimums, parking requirements, full stop. Some of the architectural requirements that we apply to four plus unit, well, five plus unit housing is maybe. Uh, I think that one bears the most actual study. Because I, I can understand that's ve- very valid points to be made on both, uh, I guess, sides of that particular regulation or, or the thinking behind having that regulation in place is that we want to make sure that we have housing types that are dignified and attractive and livable. But in requiring those kind of special treatments to the architecture for multifamily housing above a certain unit threshold, but not for, especially not for one and two unit detached homes, which are not subject to major site plan review. Uh, that seems to be a pretty significant equity issue to me. At, at the very least, I think it's worth making sure that we can tweak the ratios and the formula that we use to determine what kind of architectural elements and open space elements that were requiring of large residential development, multifamily, that is, if we're going to keep that. I could see where having just the requirement to add balconies to large apartment buildings is probably not going to be doing much to the actual structural engineering of the building that's going to add all that much cost. I suppose depending on the number of units that you have, that could eventually add up. But anything that might require a different massing altogether and, uh, things that change the overall framing, that, that could actually be substantial.
Yeah.
I, I have a general comment in the density discussions that we have in multifamily and tone, which is just a concern that, um, which is pretty far from what we are now because we have so little development. But because there are, really, we don't have a lot of parks and so on in Brattleboro and a lot of green space that, you know, we could, you know, I just want to be sure that we don't end up with something that, you know, compromises some public health because there's not places for kids to play and stuff like that.
Well, and I think, I think, you know, we've, we've talked with some developers to that point. And I had this conversation with Brandy about, you know, our requirements for multi fam- multi unit having, you know, their own private space, um, as well as a certain amount of public space. But could it be a menu of, you know, maybe there's a certain ratio where there's private space, but then, you know, what you do for public space on the property could be a playground. It could be a community garden. It could be a barbecue area or, you know, grilling area or something like that. So, uh, because I do agree, we don't want to compromise livability or public health.
I guess, uh, to, uh, not, uh, I need a better term than devil's advocate because that's not one of, this is a good faith comment. But, um, I, I do think it's worth considering that we would sort of be applying the, let me backtrack and say, if, if we haven't provided enough public park space as a municipality to this point, that is a public problem that needs to be addressed too on that front, um, from the town. And so we would sort of be adding an op, an externality to the developers of multifamily housing only above five units to fix that problem. Um, and it's sort of like the issues of, um, there are some states that have level of service based roadway impact costs. Uh, and thankfully I don't think we're one of them. But in California, I think is an example of this. You could basically have a lot of development that adds impact to a roadway. Uh, and then eventually there's a threshold that one downstream developer could eventually trigger. And then they win the jackpot of having to provide all kinds of public amenities, whereas everyone contributed to the problem. And I think especially whereas, um, four unit and below is not required to provide those sort of things. If we have a lot of incremental development, which is something that we want and the state has, uh, as well as the town has laid out as desirable. Um, and frankly, more likely, given the development characteristics we've seen in the last few decades, those developments would not be required to provide those sort of public spaces. Um, and so we would miss out on having green space altogether from those kind of developments as well under our current paradigm. So if we were going to have that sort of impact fee, uh, essentially, I, I would love to see it be not unit based. I would like to see that just be either applied to all development altogether or maybe as well as pursued as a town as well as pursued as a town policy, if not just entirely, um, taken on by the town. It would be great if, I I think it's an amenity that multifamily structures would benefit from having. But I feel a bit uneasy requiring them to do so if we're not going to require other kinds of development to do so. Because I think it's it's sort of punitive and it's it ends up having different equity focuses that are all well intentioned, sort of conflicting with one another, and I would I would hate to have that be the result of our policy.
Yeah, I I think what you're getting at is you could make a bad situation worse. Essentially, uh, and I, uh, Prudence, I I would agree if you're thinking about the distribution of park space, but in terms of absolute acreage. I mean, we have a state park in town. I mean, for example, I mean, I think we actually, I I I don't, I don't, I don't know where this fits, but, um, I don't think you can sort of put a ratio of multifamilies to park space and say one is depleted. You know, absolutely depleting the other. But that's just, you know, and then, yeah, putting a requirement for it. It's, I mean, I understand keeping a tree and, you know, keeping shade space for the sake of the structure and all that, but, um, I don't know what you, you know, where you were going with the the quantity of park space, but I guess the only way I would think of it as is as a a distrib- geographic distribution issue maybe, but not in terms of absolute acreage, I I mean. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but I think we have a pretty good distribute, a a pretty good ratio of park space.
Yeah, you, I mean, Living Memorial Park's big. And and then Fort Damar, it's a good point. It's just that, yeah, it's a distribution. There aren't very many little, you know, playgrounds, pocket parks, uh, you know, just some green green field where you can kick a sock soccer ball around and stuff in a lot of the neighborhood.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sure it's, uh, if 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 I wasn't being clear enough, which is, uh, very likely. If we were to focus on making sure that we are having enough provision of of green space and parks. I want to be clear, I'm in full support of that as a as a goal. That's a good thing. People need that in the community. We probably would have better re- return on investment if we were to really integrate that into our bike pad master plan and make sure that there's connectivity uh, that folks can get to our public parks. I think that, uh, there's two small aspects of this conversation that are worth centering when we're thinking about what we are going to get as a result of our policy. One of which is, I think there's a major difference between semi semi public, but in effect, private space that we're asking these developers to provide. That's not really as universally enjoyable as a public park would be. It's primarily for the residents. So I think it it's sort of different. We're we're not talking about exactly the same thing when we're asking for them to provide amenities. So it might be better in in the end to have pooled resources to provide more quality public space that is fundamentally public, that everyone feels that they are able to use rather than simply residents of a community. And I think we would actually have better uptake if we were to have that sort of focus rather than. It might be different in this town, but anecdotally, I feel like every community of apartments that I've ever lived in that had, I don't know, volleyball courts, a tennis, uh, uh, court or whatever other kinds of recreation space that they were required to provide. It seems like there's very little uptake, um, and it's just sort of a.
Usage, you mean?
Yeah, there's very little usage, uh, of most of those and and not a lot of maintenance as compared to a public park. And that might not be the case here necessarily, but it it seems like the quality of the actual space itself and what it's offering as amenities is worth considering. Rather than just saying this much square acreage should be green space. If we make sure that we have high quality space, um, it might be more. It might drive more use, it might drive more interest, and it would ultimately be a more attractive community as well. Oftentimes, I I we are successfully, I think, requiring that our subdivisions not be generative of dead green space in the form of lawns or just leftover open space. But I guess, uh, because I'm rambling again, not all open space is is created equal, I suppose, is the is the punchline here. And so it would be really interesting if we do want to continue having that provision of parkland be part of our residential or all forms of development. It would be nice to have, to really drill down into what we want them to provide as park space. And be more specific in what amenities need to be provided. But I think that could then run up the cost. Uh, so there is quite a bit of trade off.
Just so if everyone's aware, I think there is, you know, a decent amount of flexibility with the requirement for, you know, the, um, for multifamily structures, um, for the the public, for the open space. You know, it gives various things and it says, but not required in the urban center and not required elsewhere if you're within a quarter mile of a public park. So that may not be perfect, but that does kind of give some context. You know, awareness to that, right? I don't know if we want to keep keep on that subject. We have a lot maybe to to go over here or, um, to get through, but I'll just say that the the section E for the environmental regulations, I pretty much, you know, s- similar to what you were kind of, um, hinting at or 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 guessing at, Steve. And I for almost all of those, I wasn't, I'm not really, I don't feel compelled to, uh, to cut any of those. Except for for number four, when you highlight that there's some discrepancies with the stormwater management. I I forget if I either agreed with resolving those discrepancies or I just, I just read through the stormwater management thing myself. And I was just like, oh, I see some some issues here. I think what it was is like thinking about in my neighborhood where the lots are so small. And even for single family residences, it requires a 20 foot wide downstream buffer. It's like my property is 37 feet by 80 feet. You know, there's no 20 foot wide, you know, so it's so the the face, I mean, maybe that's what we would want to do. I don't. You know, it's, I I think, I think it's a good, um, ideal if all properties could retain, you know, their stormwater, but I think it would really change the a density and compactedness that we're also aiming for. So I think we have to not try to be so, um, purist and have every lot be that way. But other than stormwater for environmental, I that was the only one that I was interested in looking at for that.
I don't know necessarily what statute requires for that. I think primarily when I was writing these, my focus was on how we have more than a few anecdotal stories of how this is, um, a very Byzantine, uh, regulation that allegedly at least one developer in town has their own, uh, Excel that will tell them how to provide, uh, stormwater management that fits our regs. I would, I would think it's uncontroversial to say that they understand it better than we do in that case. And I I think it benefits both parties, um, you know, the developer and the regulator, uh, that both of them actually understand what's being asked for, but I think you've made a great point that, uh, if we're requiring every lot to be providing these kind of utilities, that really just is not efficient that like.
Exactly.
The network effects of having neighborhood scales, um, focus when we do this, and that would probably be more efficient at actually mitigating stormwater.
One, one more thing is, um, I say this a little reluctantly because I don't want to come off as if, um, as if I'm, you know, pro making things easier for the the, um, the dominance of the automobile, um, because I'm personally not. But last year I I brought forward the a change to the attached attached housing section, where it speaks a little bit about the garage and it used to say, um, and yeah, and we, well, we ended up settling on, um, that the garage shall be at or behind the building frontline. Previously, it was something like the entrance to the, well, the entrance to the garage must be facing, uh, sideways or backwards. Or it must be at least 15 feet back from the building's frontline, something like that. And I thought, well, you know, that's good to, you know, have houses, the frontline of the house forward and walkable communities. And, you know, cars kind of put in the back, but it stretches out the driveway. It maybe makes the building more complicated of a shape and maybe be detaches the garage. And so so generally, through that and other arguments or said other people had, you know, positions, we just settled on that the garage should just be at or behind the building frontline. So that means it could face forward, it could face sideways, could be back. So but looking at all of our districts, it has that that old wording for parking. It says, you know, well, anyway, it says that the that the parking that, you know, the parking should be screened from view, which shouldn't face forward. You shouldn't be able to see it, but.
And it it sort of begs the question of why we want to hide such a salacious and, uh, you know, um, anyways, we're requiring the provision of a particular amenity that is, um, generative of runoff, uh, and is entirely devoted to private automobile storage. Those points were already made in the in the memo, but yeah, we're we're requiring that in the built form, and then we are embarrassed of it seemingly and want to hide that from view. So I think that sort of says what it needs to about what we know parking is.
So that's so that, you know, like you had a lot of things labeled, you know, two 21 through two 41, you know, because those are the are are, uh, 12 districts. You know, you have C for the density restrictions and E for the, you know, architectural or or building. But F or no, sorry, D is the parking one. So I personally like that to be looked at.
To speak to what you were saying about attached housing, um, I I just want to confirm that, as far as we understand, and Brian Stephanie said this was true in his, uh, construction experience, that the set requirement to step back the, um, garage from the sideline. I can see and empathize and agree with the idea of not wanting to have snout houses.
Yep. Well, that's why we didn't allow it in front of the front line.
Uh, but requiring it to be stepped back is going to create more complicated massing. That does definitely add cost overall, so.
And like on my street, every place where there's a garage, it faces forward and it allows for a little driveway and a a building on a little lot, you know, with a car culture.
That's more in line with with what, um, the historic pattern, right? Well, it it feels funny to say the historic pattern of of, um, car garages, but still, uh, that that would be the case. I think there's also a form that has worked in certain areas as sort of semi suburban, semi urban row housing. Um, I can circulate some pictures for the lookbook that, uh, I've been collecting over the past year. I found a pretty good example in Indianapolis and a pretty good example in the Maryland part of the DC suburbs of areas. I'm not sure it was done specifically to be a floodplain type of housing, but this would be something that would enable housing elevated above flood, uh, base flood rather. Uh, if that was a kind of housing development that we wanted to see. Having the garage be the the ground floor and having a row house be above the garage with stairs up to the the door, uh, effectively having their first floor be the second floor of the building enables that house, the all of the dwelling area to be above base flood elevation while having the garage be something that could be flooded.
Right. Yeah, well, we saw that in the EPA's Lower Redstone Study Plan.
We have some images of that as well in that in that study.
So, I mean, I can, I can share with staff my all my checkmarks and and, um, and Sarah's as well, but I'll give, um, Dan and Prudence another chance, or, you know, you guys can email people after the meeting too. But I want to try to move on to the last thing soon. Yep, Dan.
Well, I just would re emphasize the height requirements, especially because of the elevation concerns like you're talking about. I mean, we have a hilly topography and, uh, you know, a lot of these issues are not just enforced by DRB, but by neighbors, you know, so you're talking about height requirements that some neighbors are going to be upset about and so forth. But if you have a low elevation, let's just to pick, to name names like Frost Street or Flat Street. And that, the if you put a four story building there, it's not even gonna meet the roofs of the ones one street over, you know, like, like Elliot or whatever. So, you know, I think some of the, and and that is a huge cost. That's a huge cost savings if you can add a floor or two. So I I just want to re emphasize the height requirement issue.
Yeah, we you could add from, um, I'm forgetting which developer it was now, but the the, uh, Flat Street Historic Preservation Tax Credit, um.
Exactly. Yeah, they they were.
Or, yeah, uh, losing that floor because of the historic preservation review made the project no longer pencil out. They, I think, are still going forward with it, but that is definitely evidence to to what you're saying that.
Yeah, well, that that's the historic, I get it. There's overlap here with historic preservation issues, but I I I kind of get it with that one and, you know, I, for whatever it's worth, there.
That's out of our control anyway.
Yeah, yeah. But if we have just a, you know, a triple decker versus a quadruple decker, you know, that, for example, uh, let's say on Frost Street or something. You you do have developable land there that is not feasible right now. You know? But it would be if you had, you know, an extra floor, just one floor, you know?
It's, it's definitely worth considering with how little, I guess, horizontal space that we might have left to develop in town, although I think it's a lot more than any of us, um, are even aware of per se, uh, that we could have for infill development. That vertical space in town is really a a significant opportunity for added housing. And so if we're not allowing that to be built, then we are continuing to drive the housing shortage.
Right. And if you look at, uh, just to re emphasize, like, you look at the topography, if you were to, instead of look at height requirements from the ground up, if you looked at, um, if you look at from the top down, look at the town from the roof down. Right? If you, let's just say, allowed everybody to be at the same level, that would be preposterous, of course, but I'm just saying, just think of it that way. You'd be leveling out and filling in that space at least a little bit. And boy, you'd add, you could add some serious, uh, internal square footage.
For for what it's worth on that point as well, briefly, um, we have one line in our code, um, early on in the 100s about special circumstances for buildings to go above, I think it's 35 feet. And it requires input from the fire department on how well their fire suppression, um, ability could potentially, um, reach that height. Uh, I don't.
Water pressure and so, yeah.
I think there's a great argument to say that that could just be the soft limit on height in the in the whole municipality.
So there you go. That's fine with me. I'm just saying, like, it's just this arbitrary, like, from the ground up. It's just ridiculous.
So if the fire department says, yeah, we can manage that, it's, that's okay.
Well, I don't, I mean, I think we need to talk about that because, I mean, I think there are some neighborhood expectations. So I don't think that, you know, we're necessarily in a place to say you can have whatever you want anywhere in town. I mean, downtown, that's worked well. It does have to do with where they can get their equipment, and I I just think it's it's up for conversation. I don't think we can resolve that tonight.
All I'm saying is is we shouldn't, um, I I think there's a lot of evidence in terms of, I guess, the theory of how, uh, negotiations work. But if you're wanting to make sure that the full range of possibilities is actually on the table from the start, even if you get bargained down, uh, so to speak, from that. Uh, I think we'd be selling ourselves short if we don't allow that to be considered as a real possibility from the start. And I think it's also worth just bluntly juxtapose. bluntly juxtaposing people's discomfort with the size and massing of buildings with people's inability to find dignified shelter in Brattleboro and
Exactly.
the downstream effects on our ability to hire workers that provide support for all of the things that we like to have in Brattleboro. I can't remember what the, the point I was going to make was, but yeah, I think it's worth having the conversation about that being the height limit, but I certainly wasn't suggesting that we should just bulldoze that. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the, the market is another check on how much height will be proposed. I think it's worth reiterating to folks not to imagine that we're going to become lower Manhattan.
Ridiculous.
There's, there's no way that that would actually be ever profitable. And for what's more height above a certain amount is the diminishing return.
Minishing returns for sure. Yeah.
It's going to be something that prevents gigantic buildings from happening. But we historically had, you know, quite a dense, varied built form. And the aberration is what we do now. And so I think it's definitely worth making sure that we don't provide deference to the, the very brief, very restrictive, inequitable model that we're currently in when we're talking about housing as a crisis.
Tom, are you aware it's 756?
I am. Yep. So I think staff has some good notes from that and I'll follow up with my, my checkmarks. And I'll definitely forward Sarah's email with her five or six selections of preference. Let's just do the public comment and then we'll, we'll do a, an honest vote to see if people want to go later to talk about that rural business owning district or not, or save it for another meeting.
Can I just ask what the next step is with?
Oh, sure.
The work that Steve did and then all of our comments, like what's, what are we looking to do next with that?
Well, a bunch are going to be forwarded to Brandy, right? And maybe she'll see what she can, what seems within her project scope. And then what's left, maybe then she'll kick back to us and we'll, we'll see what we want to do. Right? Does that sound good? Okay. Okay, public comment period. We have a member of the public and I know Steve was going to say something on behalf of a member of the public or something like that. Lena, hi, welcome.
Hi. It's, it's a pleasure to finally be here. I've been interested in joining, joining all of you for quite a while. And unfortunately, I set up my teaching schedule this past year that I had conflicts every Monday. So I think I've addressed that at this point and wanted to, wanted to come and say hello and hopefully to start attending. Potentially as a member, potentially as a member of the public, but either way, I'm excited to be here. I've met a couple of you along the way, so pleasure to see some familiar faces here. I, I moved to Brattleboro in the fall of 2020. So my experience of living here has probably been a little different than some other folks in town. But I had been coming here prior to that too. I've loved Brattleboro for a long time. And I have a master's of urban and regional planning. I am a nerd about small spaces like ADUs and tiny houses. I've been involved with Downtown Foundation in Walla Walla, which is a place that reminds me of Brattleboro. And part of the reason I decided to to be here was it reminded me of another place I loved. And a variety of other adaptive reuse and small, small scale development projects. So I'm curious to, to see what's happening and see how I might be able to be involved and lend a hand. And it's been really fun to be, be engaged with this conversation. I'll, I'll be trying to keep my mouth shut as much as possible, just to hear what, what's happening. Sounds like some really fascinating projects. So thank you for making this available to curious folks like me to be part of.
Well, just to be clear, I think maybe you know, but you know, during the meeting, you're welcome to raise your hand and you, you were sending messages, but you're welcome to raise your hand or if I don't notice, you know, yell out at any point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. But yeah, I guess I think I would encourage you to, to send that same self autobiography and more to the select board as an application for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Steve, you had something, right?
Yeah, so I had received a letter from a member of the public. Well, I had encouraged that member of the public after a phone call where they had explained their quandaries with our current fence height regulations. And so they would like to ask the planning commission to consider changing the height minimums or the height maximum rather of fences in in town. I think 10 feet is what they would like. And currently we allow for three to four in the front, depending on the context.
If it's in the setback.
And yes, and four to six by right, six to eight with, with the permit up on the other three property boundaries. So just thought I would raise that. I can get you that letter.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Text. Sorry.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just wondering if you could give some context, like why this person is asking, I'm assuming they have a project that they want tall fences. I'm just curious why, I guess.
For noise reduction, it was, I believe, the long and short of the reason that was going to make traffic noise specifically was why they were wanting to have a fence. They felt that it was in the rural residential, so 40 feet back into the property to be able to have an eight foot fence was not amicable to the, how close their house is to the road. And then they didn't feel that the landscaping that they were able to have was effective at blocking noise. So that was the whole argument, I believe.
There, there's also the case where the property slopes up and that was the need for the 10 foot. So, so the property, the house kind of sits at the top of a hill or at least a little bit of slope. So they were looking for a 10 foot fence to kind of provide that buffer where the six to eight wasn't going to, in addition to it being only four feet in the front setback. Because of the shape of the, the topography, it wasn't going to work.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just quickly comment that I, you know, I'm not, I'm not 100% sold on, on, you know, just removing limits to fences, but I am. I do find it, you know, compelling in some ways. I see two sides to it. One, you know, some people will, will say that, you know, we shouldn't have such limiting or blocking front yard fences and walls because of wanting to have a welcoming community and see the front doors of houses and porches, right? And be kind of open. So in that sense, you know, I, I think I certainly agree with the, the restriction on, you know, concrete block walls and barbed wire over it and stuff, because I don't think there's really the need for that here. Like there may be in some other parts of the world. But as far as making on the other side, you know, that makes me lean more towards removing some of that, those restrictions is, is just a matter of private enjoyment of property. You know, if you're, if, because for me personally, you know, it, it's not relevant to, to me, you know, at, at my current house. But, you know, having a, a nonstop during the day, you know, stream of cars going by, just the noise, the aesthetics and people, you know, looking in, it can make a space much more enjoyable if you can close it off for yourself, for your kids, for your garden, for your pets, whatever.
Absolutely. The objective measure of car trips per day as per the agency of transportation does not particularly bear out with that description.
Wait, what do you mean that they're increasing?
It's not very heavy traffic volume. So it might be a difference between perception and
What do you mean that that's changing over time?
No, just that it's a pretty low volume, fair or fair.
Well, it's just a matter of someone's bothered by it or not.
Right, that's
Yeah, that's don't matter. Yeah.
In, in terms of creating policy.
It's not, it's not like on I-91, they're not
Right, yes. Right. So I, I think that's worthy to consider. But I, I was thinking it might be worth considering adding a dimensional waiver aspect to accessory structures or height specifically within accessory structures. That's something that we didn't speak to in the current regulations. So there really isn't any flexibility in that regard, other than going up to the eight feet. I suppose you could argue for having just conditional use review above the eight feet with a gas unlimited height.
It just dawned on me, if we were to be as strict as a select board, is we would say, oh, we shouldn't, we shouldn't start discussing public comments because they weren't warned. But whoops, shouldn't have said that. But are you guys intrigued enough by this idea to, 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 to see some sort of proposed, you know, revision to the fence wall thing? And just consider it at a next meeting? Or not interested or what?
I, I'm interested and I have a quick question for Sue. Do you think historically this has been, this kind of thing has been requested or very often or not very often?
Not, no, we've not, not the, not the, not the eight foot limit. We haven't really run into that. We have had issues with, you know, people wanting a six foot fence in the front yard and we've said no. We've actually made somebody cut their fence down because they built it without a permit. And they, they cut it back. They, they were okay with that. So the eight foot limit hasn't been an issue until now. The front setback is something we've encountered.
So it's safe to say it would be a pretty rare occasion to have this sort of actually built.
I think so. I don't think most people are looking at, you know, fences over six feet, to be honest. I mean, there's been a couple of eight footers that have gone to the DRB, I think, but I think it would be pretty rare.
Sarah.
As a newish member, what is sort of the like? If one person like sort of brings a complaint or concern, like what, like, how many of those do we need about a certain thing to, to actually spend time considering it? I guess I'm just curious as far as like, if every time we get a sort of one off issue with, you know, zoning or whatnot, and we, you know, spend staff time and commission, you know, what's the like trade off, I guess? Or is it because this is how the public process works and we just, I don't know. Do you know what I'm saying or what I'm asking?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, the only, the only people really voting on the, on the land use regs are, are, you know, the appointed planning commissioners. So the ideas can come from us, they can come from staff, they can come from a mob, you know, storming down the door. I think we'd actually like the attention if that happened or it can come just from a single comment. Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. It's the process. You know, the planning commission can take it up and, and ask for some language. You could, you know, the, the person could also propose it. And if they had enough signatures, you know, get it considered that way too. So it, it's just the process. We don't have a hard and fast number.
But then the way we do
Then why not look at it? Yeah.
Worthwhile thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's a real big priority if it's one, one incident that we've had over the years. But I, I wouldn't want to see us spend a lot of time on it.
Well, maybe something quick can be drawn up. That seems reasonable and we can consider it. Okay, it's 8:08 past the meeting time. I will ask the commission, I'm not necessarily requesting, I'm just asking if there's interest in doing the rural business owning district item now or at a future meeting.
Feature.
Okay.
Future.
Future.
I'm good.
Okay. Let's, let's skip it and do it at the next one or the one after. Great. There being no other, oh, wait, there is that business. So let's vote to adjourn. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.